It's one of the few times that the agenda hasn't changed. Well, it's not supposed to. Kevin says it's something in emergency.
Is this a replacement for the one that we got?
Very few emergencies.
That's what was out there.
Mm.
No, I think this is just...
Can he leave that alone?
Certainly. Yep. Yep, we'll do.
You got a small crowd. Oh geez. Don't dig that up. Hi. How you doing?
Alright. We're ready. When everybody rise and flag.
Restow upon us your graciousness and love. We thank you for the many concerned individuals in our city. We thank them for the great pride, respect, and love they have given to their neighborhoods and to their city. The Lord said, "Speak to all; listen to all, so that we may all benefit." We must remember that the doors of opportunity are marked "push and pull."
Did you take that? Did you? Foster decided. Has the majority of the...
Let's take clerk caller roll.
Mayor Stafford.
Here.
Alderman Lincoln.
Here.
Alderman Sahasky.
Here.
Alderman Weston.
Here.
Alderman Sherman.
Here.
Alderman Thompson.
Here.
Alderman Woodward.
Here.
Present, Your Honor. Whereas Shirley Franco passed from this life Tuesday, January 20th, 1998, at A. Lee Memorial Hospital in Fulton, New York, and whereas Mrs. Franco worked as a cost accountant clerk at the Miller Brewing Company in Vauldney, New York for many years, and whereas she was a member of the Immaculate Conception Church and the Catholic Daughters of America, and whereas she was administrator of the Fulton Food Co-op and a committee person for the Democratic Party, and whereas she was the first woman elected as councilman in the city of Fulton, and whereas Shirley touched so many lives with her great smile and personality, and she will be sorely missed by all who knew her, and whereas she is survived by three sons, James J. of Livonia, John A. of Houston, Peter S. Franco, who is currently deputy police chief for the Fulton Police Department, and she is also survived by five daughters, Catherine J. Seeley, Mary E. Franco, and Wendy M. Dumas, all of Fulton, and Patricia M. Kewelton, and Ann J. Kirklewitz, both of Oswego, a brother, Arlen Klein of Fulton, two sisters, Joan Dexter of Arkansas and Barbara Jessamine of Florida, 21 grandchildren, three great-grandchildren, and several nieces and nephews. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor, members of the common council, all the employees of the city of Fulton, and the Miller Brewing Company wish to honor this great woman, all that she has accomplished throughout her life, and be it further resolved that this resolution of respect be spread upon the official minutes of this council meeting on February 3, 1998, and a certified copy be sent to the immediate family of the late Shirley Franco.
I'll have for that, Your Honor.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Most carried.
Whereas the city clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this meeting on February 3 in the council chambers relative to a proposed local law which would amend Chapter 120 of the Fulton City Code by adding a new section 120-51-0 which deals with a piling of snow. Mayor Stafford will declare this hearing open.
This situation was brought to light back when we had the heavy snowfall and then the thaw and the rain and some flooding was caused. At that time, we found we had no resolution on the books that would take care of this situation, and that's why this has been proposed. Public hearing is now open.
Nobody wants to say something? I will. This came out of a problem on South First Street. There was a business that had about a 20-foot pile, a 20-foot-high pile of snow. When it all melted, the two neighbors right next to them had about four feet of water in their backyard. I don't think, though, that this, by making it law that you can't pile snow where it's going to run off into your neighbor's yard, I don't think this is the right way to go. That's just my opinion. I think you're making this too restrictive. I think the city of Fulton would be a big culprit in this. I think in that situation, we should just ask the person with 20 feet of snow, you know, "Please move it." The person who owns the property has the ability to move the snow. I think we should just ask nicely. If he doesn't do it, then we can go after him a little bit harder. I think this is too restrictive, and I'm not thrilled with it.
Yeah. Your Honor, if you drive around the city, you'll see that Fulton's got a lot of small lots, a lot of hills, and I don't know, anybody that's been on the council for a while or as you begin, you'll get complaints about, in the neighborhoods, about snow. But what I'm concerned about is if a person doesn't, has got limited space, then what are they going to do? Pay to take it away? I mean, that could cost a ton of money. I think there's recourse through civil court if neighbors fight with each other over snow. Is there not, David?
Yes, there's.
And I would much rather see that. Now, I'm not saying that I've never in the sixth ward had a problem with it, because I have. But I still think it's a civil situation that should be handled that way, because I can tell you from raising a family that if I paid somebody $150 a year to plow the snow, I couldn't pay him another $800 to take it away. And I think that's what you're going to end up with. You know? There's some places, if you're on a hill, where are you going to put the snow, and then where do you go from there? Are we going to try to make it so when it rains, it don't run off our property too? It's going to. You know? It's just my feeling on it.
My name is Donald Walsh. I'm a resident of Fulton. What I was wondering is, over a period of years, on these big, high piles on the corners, I know it's an obstruction. In fact, there's one right up on Anita Street now.
Yes, we usually haven't done it yet, right? That's in the VUT law. That's, I can put a work order in. The city did do it in the past.
This is what I'm saying. The city usually takes care of this. They've done it for years. I can't understand what the problem is right now. Why do you have to change and put a law in there when the city's been doing it for years?
That, in terms of already a law, that's governed by the VUT law. On the corners.
This was a private property where the private landowner had piled it up with a payloader, so there was a large mound of snow. It wasn't just a regular snowbank.
Now, a guy plowed a business, and he plowed it all to the back, and he had a huge mound, and probably if it went down slow, right, Harley?
Yeah, well, he plowed the snow all the way to the back of the parking lot, and the back of the lot abutted to the backyard of the next guy down the road, and the next guy down the road from him, too, and they both, you know, the water ran into the backyards of those two. And it got solved. I believe he did move the snow. It's gone. It's not a problem.
I understand. The son of a million, it was all over the city.
No, this is one.
Well, that's a different situation.
As far as I know, one isolated incident has been taken care of without passing this, and, you know, I think we asked him nicely. The guy came, moved the snow, and the problem. And I don't think that we need to do this, because we can continue to go ask nicely, "Hey, move your snow, it's causing a problem." And most people will realize that if you have a 20-foot pile of snow, when it melts, it's going to, it's going to be wet.
It'd be the same way, but I just want to understand it a little clearer. Thank you.
Your Honor, one mention I'd like to make in, to this effect, is I think we also have to look at the contour of the lane, which would have water running off into neighbors' yards, have nothing to do with snow, but just the way the land is shaped.
Yeah. Lot of hills in the city.
Oh, yes.
Mayor, I also had a couple of concerns. A couple of people called me with some concerns about this particular legislation, and I know my first reaction when I first heard about it was we might be over legislating, and I think it can be handled, as Harley said, on a, from a civil basis.
Can I ask one, or just add one last thing? I got an email, actually, from a fireman, who said while we were talking about snow, he wanted me to mention that some people, when they hire people to plow their driveways, the trucks that plow their driveways bury the fire hydrants. And I looked through the city charter. I didn't see anywhere that you can't do that. So somewhere, I want to try and point it out. Maybe it's in the state vehicle traffic, though. But just to remind everybody, don't bury your fire hydrant with six feet of snow, because when they go around digging for it, they were over at the parking lot at Pathfinder Courts. They couldn't find the hydrant. It was on the map, and they dug around and eventually found it, but they shouldn't have to be digging out for eight feet of snow just to find the hydrant.
Yes. Anyone else on the issue? If not, I declare the public hearing closed.
I'll make a motion to table that.
Do you want to send this to a specific committee for review?
Who do we want to send it to? Legislative?
I don't...
Motion to be tabled.
Mayor, I don't think we even need to table it, do we?
Just not voting on it at all.
Let it die.
Let it die.
Okay.
I declared that.
Did.
Result that the city clerk be authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on February 17, 7:00 PM, relative to a local law which would require plumbing and HVAC contractors to purchase colored quoted years stickers to show that they are properly licensed while working in the city of Fulton.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most carried.
Result, the city clerk's report for October 1997 in the amount of $8,368.08, November 1997 in the amount of $7,857.53, December 1997 in the amount of $5,327.13, and his annual report for 1997 in the amount of $97,310.2, received, approved, and placed on file.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Most carried.
Whereas the common council at their meeting of January 20 held a public hearing relative to a proposed local law which would amend certain sections of C-29 of the city charter entitled Powers and Duties of the City Administrator. Whereas the public hearing was closed by Mayor Stafford, and the common council deferred any action on said local law until a future meeting. Whereas the common council wants to take action on this proposed local law, now therefore be it resolved that the proposed local law amending C-29 of the city charter entitled Powers and Duties of the City Administrator is hereby approved as per attached.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'd like to just make a few comments if I could. I'd like to kind of bring this into the proper perspective. Prior to 1994, a mayor's advisory committee met, and one of the things that they recommended for the efficiency of city government was this particular position. At that time, in 1993, the council okayed and budgeted money for a city administrator. In 94, Mayor Don Bullard nominated, or appointed, Joey Eller to the position of city administrator. There's no question that the council that, in 94, from 94 to 97, found that this position was extremely valuable. It provided an efficiency in government. It gave us a new perspective on the way government operates. It enabled us to come from deficits to fund balances. So it's an extremely valuable position, and I know that the past council and the council, the aldermen they're serving now would attest to that. And whether it's called, as Ron said at the last meeting, whether it's called a city administrator and executive assistant to the mayor, that's his priority, and it's a position that will prove itself to be very valuable.
Thank you, Bob. And we have a person in that position at this time who I consider very valuable. Everyone, John Crook. He's been very busy this last week.
Result that the mayor be authorized to sign the amendment to the current city of Fulton CSEA Service Unit Agreement dated January 1, 94 through January, December 31, 1996, Article 25.5, Starting Rates for Hourly Employee Schedule, which would change the starting salary for a collection systems technician from $1,102 per hour to $1,221 per hour. Said title change, starting rate, will be effective upon the passage of this resolution and will not be retroactive. Be it further resolved, the chamberlain is authorized to transfer the necessary funding.
Mayor, if I could make a comment on this particular item, I wonder if it wouldn't be in our best interest, now that we are supposedly are in, getting the good news that we are about to, or in the process of ratifying the contract over the CSEA, that we would not include that as part of the contract rather than an amendment which would set a precedent. So I would ask for that consideration.
I believe that the CSEA requested this be put on the agenda prior to the negotiation session. There was no problem with the negotiation session. I do believe it is being implemented into the new contract, but the reason it was on here is this had started prior, and it had the approval of the sanitation work.
So that will be in the new contract, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Most carried.
Whereas the city clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this meeting relative to a zone change proposal submitted by Mr. Francis Marbido, change of zone from R3 Residential to C1 Commercial for his property located at 1013 Emory Street and a portion of his property located at 1019 Emory Street, with approximately 100 foot of frontage on the 1019 Emory Street parcel. Said parcels to be incorporated into one parcel, and that the zoning for the entire parcel be changed from R3 Residential to C1 Commercial, with the stipulation that a survey be provided prior to said hearing. Mayor Stafford will declare the hearing open.
Anyone care to speak on this issue? Anyone in the coats?
Can I ask you a question? Is Archie here? For your honor?
Yes, sir.
For any future development on this property, it has to go through site plan and review?
Yes.
Will this council approve or deny we have to save what goes there before something gets built? What was the exact process? We change the zone, anything can go there, right?
No, anything that's allowable in that.
Anything that's allowable in C1.
In that zone, in that zone.
Okay.
No further input. Public hearing closed.
Your motion?
I'll move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Most carried.
Result that the appointment by Mayor Stafford with Diane C. Luddington, 217 on Anita Street, is Commissioner Dees, hereby approved.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Most carried.
Result, calling claim to refer to our city attorney for his act with letter claims submitted by South Florida Packer, the damages to the cellar floors result from flooding alleged to occur on January 7. Letter claims submitted by Mrs. Mary C. Wacker for water damages to her property alleged to occur on January 8, 1998.
Motion?
I'll move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Most carried.
Result, the city chamber will be authorized to transfer $1,447.08 contingent account to the A312824605 Police Department account for educational benefits.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Most carried.
Result that the mayor be authorized to sign a one-year contract between the city of Fulton and HR Professional Consultants, and amounts have to exceed $17,000 for human resource management consulting. Be it further resolved, the chamberlain will be authorized to transfer said amount of contingent account to the A1430.4422 Personnel Account to cover said costs.
Your motion?
I'll move that, Your Honor.
I'll second it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Most carried.
Result.
That's it.
Yes. Now, we're going to have a presentation by the city assessor, Diane Moore, in regards to the revaluation of the property in the city. Diane?
Hi. I'm Diane Moore. I'm the assessor for the city of Fulton, and I believe the purpose of the discussion tonight is to bring the council and anybody interested up to speed on what's happened with the revaluation. And I brought with me Mike Coles, the president of Coles and Associates, which is the company that we hired in 1996 to do the revaluation. I'll give you a little history about how we got to this point. In 1991, with pressure from the state of New York, the city of Fulton did do a data collection project in which we went through the entire city and gathered information on every parcel that was computerized and put in the files. However, the second phase of that was never done, and that would be to place a market value on those properties. So in 1996, when the administration saw that we had a need and it was necessary to undergo a revaluation, we had to update all of that data and place a current market value on all the properties, land, residential, commercial, industrial. And that's where we are at this point. I'm going to ask Mike to speak for a few minutes, and then we can open it up to any questions that anybody might have.
Good evening, gentlemen. Not just to repeat Diane, but my name is Mike Coles. I am the president of Coles and Associates. We were hired two years ago to do this revaluation project. Just to give you a little bit of information about our background, we've done the city of Almeira, the city of Oswego, and about 10 other towns. All together in the last 10 years, we've done about 30,000 parcels. So we do have enough experience in doing cities of this size like that to have some idea of what's going to happen. Where we go from here, in terms of these projects as of tonight, we're right up to the phase of implementation, which means that our role is just about done and ready to go to the city and ready to go to the state of New York, who will be printing the impact notices. And we hope to get those impact notices printed by the end of February. And I'm just using rough dates. There aren't no dates that are finalized yet. But we're close to printing them out the end of February. At the time that impact notices go out, then at that point, the property owners would have the opportunity to call our organization and schedule what we call an informal hearing. And anybody that has any questions about how the value was arrived at for their property gets an informal hearing. That's the way, that's where all the contracts are written. Anybody who calls in gets an informal hearing. Now, what happens there is, is that there is a timeline. In other words, they must, the window to call in is about two weeks, and in that timeframe, why, everybody that calls in gets one. And then we go ahead and arrange our schedule in order to make sure that everybody gets heard. Generally, we've done this enough times that you can count on between 10 and 15% of the property owners will want to have an informal hearing. If nothing else, just to come in and discuss their, how their value was arrived at. And we go over it. There was no value changes made at that time. Every property owner that was either a estimate or an interior refusal under the contract has the opportunity to have their home looked at on the inside one more time to make sure that we arrive at the value correctly. And then from there, why, we go ahead and turn the numbers over to the assessor, and they become the tentative role as of May 1st. Now, in the event that a prop...
No. What you're telling me, that after this happens, May 1st, we go to full value assessment? Is that what you're telling me?
You say no.
Diane?
Oh. Yes, that's the intent. Whatever we do...
That's not the way I understood this last year, when we talked about this. I don't think anybody in this council's even looked at that. I've seen very limited parts on that. I have no idea. I want to know what kind of impact this is going to have on some of the people.
I also have a question.
Diane, it, that last, if you look at the minutes of some of those meetings, the tapes, I specifically asked that question. If that was, if we were voting in full value assessment, and we were doing the data, and we were doing the research on it...
Right.
I was told no.
I think, I think where the confusion comes in is understanding what it means to be at full value assessment, or to have your assessment at 100% of market value.
Right.
When you do a revaluation, and you give everybody a current market value on their property, you've done the revaluation. Now regardless whether you assess at 100% of that number or a percentage of that number, there's going to be changes...
There's going to be shift, right?
Yeah, there's going to be shifting.
Right.
The percentage that you assess at doesn't change the impact of the revaluation numbers. Assessing it 100%, in my mind, only makes it simpler for the property owners to look at their number and understand what it means, rather than having to compute it out with an equalization rate. So implementing revaluation is what causes changes in people's tax bills.
Well, implementing the new valuation that you've done is going to change the tax bill.
Right, right. The percentage that you assess at, full value...
I understand that.
100% isn't what does that.
You're right. Okay, what impacts it going to have on industry? What's it going to have, what impacts it going to have on the industries in the towns that are in economic development zones? The ones that got pilot agreements?
Well, the pilot agreements...
Is there going to be any shifts?
We have to honor the pilot agreements the way they are for the number of years that they've been agreed to. Some of the pilot agreements are based on an assessed value, and a new assessment would kick into whatever, whatever that agreement is when you implement a revaluation.
But what I'm saying is, you couldn't actually change some of them and lower them? If, you're still going to put a value on them, right?
Yes.
But if the value was lower than what they had during...
It depends on the terms of the pilot agreement. If their pilot agreement is X amount of dollars per year regardless of their assessment, then that continues. Most, well, Seal Right and River Glen Mall are based on an assessed value.
And Meadowbrook? And the hotel?
I don't remember what Meadowbrook is.
The way those are lined, they're the set of miles that they're paying, and it's...
So that's just a street pile that's not hooked into assessments?
It's divided by, it's divided by all three by the amount of their tax rate.
When you do a revaluation and you give everybody a current market value on their property, you've done the revaluation. Now, regardless whether you assess at 100% of that number or a percentage of that number, there's going to be changes...
There's going to be shift, right?
Yeah, there's going to be shifting. The percentage that you assess at doesn't change the impact of the revaluation numbers. Assessing at 100%, in my mind, only makes it simpler for the property owners to look at their number and understand what it means, rather than having to compute it out with an equalization rate. So, implementing revaluation is what causes changes in people's tax bills.
Well, implementing the new valuation that you've done is going to change the tax bill so...
Right, right. The percentage that you assess at, full value...
I understand that.
100% isn't what does that.
You're right. Okay, what impacts are going to have on industry? What's it going to have, what impacts are going to have on the industries in the towns that are in economic development zones? The ones that got pilot agreements?
Well, the pilot agreements...
Is there going to be any shifts?
We have to honor the pilot agreements the way they are for the number of years that they've been agreed to. Some of the pilot agreements are based on an assessed value, and a new assessment would kick into whatever that agreement is when you implement a revaluation.
But what I'm saying is, you couldn't actually change some of them and lower them? If you're still going to put a value on them, right?
Yes.
But if the value is lower than what they had during...
It depends on the terms of the pilot agreement. If their pilot agreement is X amount of dollars per year, regardless of their assessment, then that continues. Most, well, Sealright and River Glen Mall are based on an assessed value.
And Meadowbrook? And the hotel?
I don't remember what Meadowbrook is.
So, that's just a street pilot that's not hooked into assessments?
It's divided by all three by the amount of their tax rate. So, there is an amount that they pay, the maximum amount.
Same with the senior kind of...
The Code Generation Plan, I believe, is a, I don't think the Code Gen Plan is going to be affected by what we do. I believe the industrial properties that we've had to address over the last four or five years with settlements with Black, Lost and Sealright and Ocelies, et cetera, I feel is that they're pretty on the mark already.
But we should know that, shouldn't we? For regardless, see? We should, don't, I mean, don't we know where they are? No?
Right.
We do?
I do, yes. And when this is all public information, everybody will be aware of...
But what I'm getting at is, are we going to have some, are we, at least having some kind of idea what we're going to experience here before this happens?
When the file is ready and the impact notices are ready to print, we will have available a report that'll show shifting among different property classes. We can somewhat show shifting among different areas of town. And yes, the council can be made aware of that.
Okay.
Do you understand 100%, though? I think it's very confusing.
Yeah, if you assess somebody's property and you go at a percentage or 100%, they're still going to pay the same. It's just going to be a different rate per thousand, is that right?
Well, yeah. That mean that...
I understand that.
Right now, our city tax rate is 200 and something dollars a thousand, and...
I just don't recall a May 1st date. I just don't recall that we're going to implement this May 1st. I thought we were... You know?
Well, my calendar always is tentative role, May 1st.
I understand that. I know that.
Yeah, and when you're revaluing, I believe, impact notice have to be sent around this time of year in order to get all the changes made that need to be done by the tentative role before grievance day.
So, you're going to explain to the council the options like the Homestead Act and like that?
We had explained that before, but we could go over that again.
But what I'm saying is, we have no options like that? I mean, I didn't think this was a done...
There's a Homestead option, yeah.
I didn't think that this was a done deal for May 1st is what I'm trying to tell you. Last fall, I did not think that's what was going to happen. Because I asked that question.
I guess I'm not sure what you thought was going to happen or what you thought wasn't going to happen. I mean, a year ago at this time...
Right. We paid to have the city reveal.
It's been a whole year, so now we're back at that same point.
What's been going on for the last year? Well, Mike can tell you that... This has been on hold for a year. I guess my first question would be, what have we been doing for the last year?
We've been double-checking the values. We've been watching the market, watching the sales, you know, doing the building permits all over again.
Excuse me, is that why a mailing was pulled? I mean, as I recall, you had a mailing down in your office ready to go out on a Friday, and that was pulled for some strange reason. Did you send that to this firm?
Mm-hmm.
Why was it pulled and why was it sent back? And what information did you have to do it right the first time so that mail could get sent out?
Mike, that question?
Either one of them.
Yeah, it is.
One of the big concerns a year ago, let me see. The state of New York provides us with appraisals of the big industrial properties, or they give us an appraisal as well as a value that Coles comes up with. One of those appraisals, we didn't have on our hand, two of them actually, the Toon Dean Food appraisals. Well, when you're talking about a million-dollar property that you're not sure what the value should end up being, you could impact the taxpayers, you know, the wrong way with that. And there were some things we wanted to look at, and there's some shifting that takes place that we wanted to look at again.
And that change can only take place on May 1st of every year? When you...
Right, right. If it wasn't implemented at that time, we had to delay the whole thing.
If you go past the May 1st date, then you have to go to the next year.
Right, right.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, I know we talked about the Homestead Act, and I got some information on it from City Syracuse. They decided not to do it, and I understand why they did it, or why they didn't do it, I mean, but we're not Syracuse. And I just want, if the council was to consider something like that, I don't think they could consider it intelligently unless they knew what impact it was going to have on their citizens and what impact the Homestead Act would have on the businesses.
I believe the resolution or whatever is in place to use the Homestead if we want to.
Yeah, but we have to understand it before we do it.
Right, and I don't know, I don't have the report in my hands now either.
But what I'm saying is, if we don't understand both the options, and then we send out a lot of mailings now, we're going to incite a lot of people with something we might not do. We might do something different.
We did go over the Homestead last year when we were in the middle of all this.
With the public?
Yeah, in this forum like this, yes. And I have some brochures I can hand out again.
But you see what I'm saying? I have no idea how it's going to impact anybody in front. I have no idea where the shifts are going to be or...
When does a decision on the Homestead have to be done?
I'm not sure of that either. I think before final roll or before tentative roll, maybe. It's a very complicated process.
But what I'm saying, does it have to be done before these impact statements are mailed out?
I don't think so. I don't believe so.
Okay.
Because that comes into play when you're levying the taxes, levying the amount that you're going to on residential versus commercial.
Can I keep going? Go right ahead. I'm here to answer questions.
The Homestead, I think somebody, we need like an explanation. I know what it is, but for the people of the Homestead, what does it mean?
Basically, a Homesteading creates two classes of properties within the taxing jurisdiction, a commercial class and a residential class. The commercial class remains taxed at its original tax rate, and any shifts occur within the commercial group. And the residential class remains taxed at a second tax rate. And those properties, any shifts stay within the residential group. Okay, now, what Diane, and when I say residential versus commercial, in other words, Diane would have to make a distinction on the role between what is a commercial and what is a residential property. And that distinction comes in especially into your multifamily units. At what point does it become, is it no longer a multifamily unit and it is now considered a commercial unit? Okay, generally with your commercial properties, if it's a business, it's not a problem. But when you, the distinction does have to be made.
Is that only commercial, not industrial?
Industrial commercials are all in together, okay, that way.
The reason I'm asking this, and I don't really know unless one of the reasons I'm asking, but I know that in the last 15 or so years, there have been a lot of incentives in the state to keep business here, and that's good. I understand that. But, I mean, probably up until last year is the first time in many years that the homeowners got any kind of a tax break. I mean, it seemed like there's pilots, agreements, and there's economic development zones, and there's, they provide incentives on sales tax and all kinds of stuff, you know, and the surgery proceedings come around, always a shift goes into the homeowners and like that. I want to be sure in my mind if there's options that would not drive some senior citizens or lower-income people out of the home. I want to know about it. That's the only thing.
And there will be a shift analysis provided before the notices actually go out, just as it was last year. We had time to analyze the shifts and make that determination.
Right. Yeah, and I guess, you know, informed public's the best, you know? If they understand what the impact would be both ways, you know, if we did, because I really don't know what the impact of the Homestead Act would be in the city, because I have no idea of where the, how the shift's going to be or what it would do to industry if we went to the Homestead Act, how it would affect them. Might help them, I don't know. I suspect it wouldn't.
You have to wait for the shift analysis to know what's going to happen.
Okay. All right, I guess what I want to say is, I don't want to just rush it right in. I know May 1st is coming up, but I still want to know both sides before we do it, because I still think the council has some hard decisions to make on it. That's my opinion.
Okay, then in the guise of being fully informed, okay, one of the other things that comes into play is, we managed to carry the numbers forward for one year.
Right.
Okay, and our firm did that in the City of Almira, and we did it, you know, since we've had some practice down there. It worked out very well. We were able to carry them forward for a year when there's minimal changes in the value of the property, which we analyzed the residential and commercial properties here in the City of Fulton, and there was minimal change, so we think these values are good for another year. What we don't do is carry them forward for two years.
Okay. Well, that's okay. Ultimately, we got to make the decision.
If we don't do it this year, we're going to spend another 100 and some thousand dollars to revalue again, right? Those numbers are bad, the 178...
Yes, you've got it.
I don't know if we don't do this now.
Yeah, the original contract was for a little over 140,000.
Right.
And we can say, what hap, from our standpoint, okay, in other words, when I say you can come in and do an informal hearing, that means that anybody can come in and we can discuss the value of their property with them, okay? Now, last year in 1996, just to give you an idea of how this works from a, from the contractor's perspective, we have sales that we used, I believe, from January 1st, 1994 through August, 1996. Okay? Now, if we were to carry it forward another year, that means that in 1999, in March, 1999, I would be sitting across the table from a property owner, telling them that I know what the value of their property is with the sales I used from 1994 to 1996. And that's where we draw the line. Okay, I'm not, I won't do that. Okay, I mean, you really have to redo it. In other words, we just have to, you know, you have to run the analysis again. Basically, you're right. You have to do another revaluation.
Well, even if we go forward, eventually, we're going to have to do another one, right? Because you have to maintain it over the course of time, like another three or four years?
Five years or something, I don't know.
Well, what happens is, what makes this May 1st, the assessment calendar is very unforgiving in this matter, okay?
Yeah, I know, that's when the roles are to change.
Yeah, okay, in other words, we have the, one of the kind of drop-dead dates is like March 1st for the sending out of the impact notices. But the only drop-dead about that number is, is that it's worth $3 per parcel to the city as reimbursement for payment for.
Right.
If you're not worried about the $12,000, okay, then it doesn't, then March 1st doesn't mean much.
No, I guess what I'm more worried about is seeing somebody lose their own.
Okay, and that's...
That's fairly important to me.
Okay, and that's fine. That's why we're trying to get all the numbers done now and get everything ready to go, is that you have time to look at the analysis.
As long as the people know it's informal right now, that they can come and ask questions and they, you know, that we still have some options.
And there's, but what makes this May 1st deadline, and this really gets out of our control...
I know, you got to change the rules.
No, when you, if you miss the May 1st deadline for the new numbers, you revert back to the original role for another year.
Right, right. I understand that, that's what happened last year.
Yes, that's, you know, well, basically, last year, we just said we are going to miss that, you know, we're not, we're not going to ignore that deadline and use last year's role. Okay, so that's what happens for, and then after that, then it's not an option. Then the numbers are carried forward into 1999, and then basically, that's where we step out and say, all right, we're not going to take these numbers forward any further. Now, what happens is, there's virtually, everything that we've done up to this point for what we've done, only a small part of that, the re-verification of the data, is anything that can be carried forward. Really, the bulk of what was paid for was the actual doing the revaluation.
Right.
So, you're still looking at, if this one here was 140, you're still looking at an expenditure of, my guess would be well over 100,000 to redo it and come out with new numbers for 1999.
Are we going to get a chance to look at the numbers, review the numbers, and see the differences in what people are paying now in taxes and what they're going to be paying in taxes?
That's what I was getting at. I'd like to know what's going to happen.
Are we going to be able to see that?
I want some kind of idea what's going to happen to people here.
There's a shift analysis, okay, that is going to be available that tells you what the inter and intra-class shifts were between residential properties and...
If the shift analysis is going to be available, and we need to put these notices out by March 1st, when is the analysis going to be available between now and March 1st, which is four weeks away?
We're getting, we're working on it today. Okay, and the state has told us as soon as we get the numbers to them, why they're ready to go ahead and prepare the shift analysis.
I think we need a workshop, maybe Mike would, the council would, with Diane, and look at what kind of impact this is going to have.
Well, I had asked Diane last year if I was going to be able to keep a look at and see how like the constituents were going to be affected, and she said I would be able to do that, but the last she released the information from the constituents. The whole purpose of us trying to look at the stuff beforehand, they don't want to show you the areas of where the shifts took place. They meant specific information about, you know, how Zohaski was changed, how Weston was changed, how Tassan was changed, how Woodward was changed, how Stanford was changed. So, we won't be able to look at that information.
I didn't know you couldn't do that. I thought that was public information, the tax...
The tax records released to the constituent. And they receive it.
Is that right?
What, once this gets released and the notices go out to the taxpayers, after that, what options do we have?
Is this a big boulder coming down the hill of Fulton? I think that's what the question is.
As a council, and now we're getting into the real litigation end of this, I believe as a council, you have the right to request that the assessor not implement the new numbers.
But again...
Yeah, and that is an option.
...all the money out the door, though, if we do that, right?
Yes.
So, really, practically speaking, none, there's no option.
Well, there is an option. They have the Homestead, no, they have a Homestead Act, it's an option. But in order, if we don't know what the shift is going to be, you know...
But until we see what the shift is, we don't know if we want to even...
That's what I'm saying, yeah, yeah. But I mean, we should know, don't you think, before we do this?
Well, but if we can't get the information before it goes out to the property owners, that makes it very difficult.
Well, she said she can show us the shifts.
No, you can see some shift.
Well, let's show a shift from commercial to, you know, if there's a disparity between homes and commercial, will I show that shift also?
Yeah, that's what I mean by intra-class and intra...
All right.
Inter-class shifts and intra-class shifts.
That would be most helpful.
That's a question.
I guess so. Might as well. The Homestead Act, I mean, the property act now with the way that some assesses industries keep going back and having their taxes reduced because the city hasn't got a like-the-stand on what they're assessing that now in court. That's the main reason why this would be a change. The industries won't keep coming back to have the taxes reduced. It's worth a million dollars, it's worth a million dollars. We'll know it for a fact. If you do that Homestead Act, will that give them a reason to be able to have their taxes reduced in court? Or is that illegal then?
The Homestead Act is illegal, but it's not, it'll not be able to be processed. I think the reason that most municipalities or towns in the state of New York that maybe considered that option did not do it.
That's true. I know that. I've seen that, what I've looked at, but I still, I still haven't looked at it.
They can take a court based on their assessed value. They can't take you to court based on the Homestead Act. But they're not going to like the fact that a $100,000 commercial property pays X amount of dollars per thousand in taxes, and a $100,000 house pays less per thousand.
I think the biggest thing that has to realize is the fact that this bill wasn't about stock industry. The city losing every time the city industries come to the agency, we're all assessing. We really don't know now, the basis that you're using now, as always, you don't know what you're doing. And your equalization changes up in there.
That's true.
I don't think there's a person in the city that knows what the property is actually worth, who wants to pay taxes. And that's why the industry needs to be, I mean, they might be under assessed, you don't know.
I just wanted to mention one other thing. You know, the fear of the shift is always going to be there. It's been history that commercial industrial property was probably assessed higher, and residential property may have been assessed lower. For years, the state of New York provides us every year with two percentages. One of them is called the equalization rate. They take a survey of all kinds of property, from land to residential to commercial industrial, and they do a ratio for us of our assessment versus what their appraised value is, and they give us an equal... And they give us an equalization rate. They also do, because we have never done a revaluation, they also do a study and, and give us a residential assessment ratio. So they've done a study of only residential properties. Ten years ago, the equalization rate was fourteen or fifteen or sixteen percent. The residential assessment ratio was down maybe around seven or eight percent. As the years have gone by, the equalization rate has dropped faster than the residential assessment ratio. Right now, our equalization rate, proposed equalization rate for nineteen ninety eight will be five point six six, which will change depending on the hundred percent that we, I hope we would go to. The residential assessment ratio now, right now is four point six one. So these ratios are closer together than they've ever been, which would create less of a shift than would have been last year, the year before, and the year before that.
Diane, isn't it true that the, um, it's extremely beneficial to the school district, um, if the reval is put in place with the different, with the different rates in the different towns?
In what way? Because there's more value?
Well, there may not be more value. It, it just, when, the ideal thing for a school district is if every town within their district revalued at the same time, all the time. Perfect example is what happened to the town of Valley last year with the Miller and, and the huge increase that the Valley residents saw for their school taxes.
Are they full value?
No.
Huh?
No. Valley is not full value.
Five percent.
They did a reassessment before they paid out the percentage, like five percent of the value.
Okay, but they revalued, you mean? But they just didn't go to full value?
They did a revalue, but they didn't implement every single number that was given to them.
I also, I remember that former mayor, uh, we had a public hearing such as this tonight, uh, said that there would be a public hearing where, you know, we could sit here and answer questions. The constituents said we would actually vote, I voted for them.
Yeah, I thought we did. I, I asked John Sullivan, and he said that.
Tim, what I just passed out to you here is, basically, this is just residential properties. In the first column, it's just the tax map number that actually represents a property in one of the, and these are the tax maps that are across the city. So it's a general cross-section of the city. In the second column, it's each one of these homes is a homes that, that we appraised or have a new assessment on that'll be coming down of, of fifty thousand dollars. So my point is here, each one of these homes was worth fifty thousand dollars. Now, the idea is that if, if taxing is to be fair and equitable, that all homes that are worth fifty thousand dollars should be paying the same amount in taxes. Okay, that's where the seventeen fifty five would come in. That's the full taxes they would pay under the current rate at full value. The next column is their old assessments. That's the assessments that they have right now. And that's, and the last column is the taxes that they're paying right now. So within residential properties, within the, uh, single-family residential class, homes that are worth fifty thousand dollars just by this representation are paying somewheres between one thousand and twenty-four hundred dollars in taxes. The same property owners.
If this was the basis for doing the reval-
This is why you do, yeah.
These inequities.
The inequities in the roll, yes.
I guess I have a question here. Uh, how does this have an effect on rental properties as far as, you know, if you've got a fifty thousand dollar house that's a rental property, that's a two-unit versus one that you might say is a three-unit, both of them being fifty thousand dollars, are they still gonna pay seventeen fifty five, or is there a consideration for their income on those properties as far as taxes?
If it's worth fifty thousand dollars, I don't care whether it's vacant land, or rental property, or residential property, or a commercial property, or a business, or whatever. If it's worth fifty thousand dollars, it pays for fifty thousand dollars worth of real property taxes.
If you put the homestead in, would that affect it?
Yeah, you, well, because, yes, because you're then creating two, two separate classes. In other words, all your-
And rental property would fall under commercial property?
Again, that's where Diane would have to make the distinction. At what point, at how many units, does it, is it no longer considered part of the single-family property? And is it considered a residential property, or is, and is considered a commercial property? Is it one unit, or three units, or four units? And if it's two units owner occupied, you know, it just, there's, that's, that's the distinction that Diane has to make.
Yeah, I know sometimes, like, uh, rental properties, if they, they can agree with their taxes and go to, like, small claims, but I think three and up that are together had to go to search for proceedings or something like that, like industry does?
I think it's three units and up owner occupied can do small claims. Okay, do you want, then perhaps what you're looking, perhaps part of the answer you were taking is, is you were thinking of there in rental properties, do we take their income into consideration? Yes, we do. Okay, in other words, you would value a rental property somewhat differently than you would value a single-family residential property. Because, because the more units it has, the better condition it's in, the more rents that they can command, the more that that property is worth.
See, right now, I'm aware of property in Fulton. There's a four-unit and there's a two-unit right next door to each other, okay? Both of them are in similar condition, but the assessments are the same. But the income is greater, obviously, on a four-unit versus a two-unit.
And what you may be aware of is one of the inequities in the roll, then.
Right. And I just want, you know, I'd like to see some sort of incentive, disincentive for multi-unit versus a single-family. One of the big problems in this, in the city in the past here has been the number of multiple dwellings in here, and I, I don't know. I, I'm, I'm almost leaning in the fact, or in the, in the manner that, uh, there should be some sort of, you know, if you're gonna have that type of, of, you know, building, you're gonna pay for it also. And to use the taxes as an incentive, disincentive plan, to say, maybe it'd be a better incentive to move their house back from a two-unit back to a single-family. A lot of, a lot of these houses in the city have been subdivided. And with this type of, uh, plan, that may not be, you know, accomplished.
Well, let's make it clear, that taxes is your part, value is my part, okay? So I've been brought in to establish the values.
Okay.
How you wanna handle it from a tax situation is, it's all yours.
Is, is there any other way of looking at that or, or handling that situation other than homestead? With rental property?
No, but, uh, no, basically, that, value is value.
Value is value.
Yes.
Mike?
Okay.
How would, uh, just a question. How would veterans exemption or any kind of other exemptions fit into play here?
Exemptions are an assessor. Once they're there.
He just valued it. That's all you can, huh?
Veterans, there's two kinds of veterans exemptions. There's an exemption called ineligible funds, which is a fixed dollar amount, up to five thousand dollars, that can be their exemption. Last year, the council passed the change in level law that allows anybody's existing eligible funds exemption to increase with the change in level because of a revaluation. For example, if we're going from five percent, assessing at five percent to a hundred percent, then the change in level would be around twenty percent, or whatever the change in level ends up being. So those veterans are going to benefit approximately the same, unless they're terribly under-assessed at this time. And then they may not have the same amount of, they may pay more taxes than they used to. The other veteran's exemption is an alternative, and that's either a fifteen or twenty-five percent off of your assessment. So that's applied whether you're at parcel assessment or at a hundred percent. Senior citizens and businesses are also a percentage. So, um, regardless of what level you assess at, that exemption is applied the same. Okay?
Thank you.
So, I mean, they're protected. The council has done, has passed every exemption to the highest level that is available. And to worry about the senior citizens and the people that have been used to certain tax breaks.
You claim that you're gonna send out notices on this re- reevaluation to all the people that own homes and things in Fulton?
That's the intent, yes.
Before these people even know what it is?
They'll see the shift analysis.
No, I mean, you, you said that you were gonna send these, uh, assessment, reevaluation letters to the people of what their property's worth.
There'll be a time lag. They'll, they will be sent, they will have a chance to look at the shift analysis.
Yeah.
Okay? And then from there-
You gotta vote on it afterwards?
No, they don't have to vote on it at all.
The council don't?
That's up to, you know, I mean, if they want to, um-
The way I understood this when this reevaluation thing was put in, that this would be reviewed before the people got any, uh, notices or anything else about these, uh, uh, new reevaluations on their property.
Yeah, the shift analysis will be reviewed, yeah.
If you send these letters out to people, they don't even understand it right now.
Oh, there will be, there's, there's gonna be public meetings. There's also gonna be reports available in City Hall and-
Yeah, but I mean, why can't they have them before they're sent out?
But Don, what he's saying is, we can't see them until you see them. I was, but he's, well, what Diane is saying, and from what I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, we can't look at the individuals until the individual sees it first. Is that right, Diane?
Well, I tell you, you're gonna have to put in another force down there in the assessment, uh, room, because the people are gonna be up in arms with it.
I suspected that, yes.
They better put on a double crew.
My word, there's no way I can tell what the impact is to you until you find out yourselves.
Till you feel the impact.
It doesn't really bother me, but just like Ryan says, there's a lot of people, older people, that won't even understand this thing, and they'll see a, a price on their home that says that they've, uh, got a fifty thousand dollar home, and they've been living for years with one that says they're assessed for two thousand dollars. They're, they're gonna start really screaming.
But the information that goes out, is it going to explain?
Yes. The information on the letter doesn't just say to you fifty thousand dollars or eighty thousand dollars. It explains the taxes that you paid in nineteen ninety seven and ninety eight for school, city, and county, and it shows you what your taxes would have been had we been at, at this level of assessment, had the revaluation been in effect when the taxes went out for the school, city, and county in ninety seven and ninety eight. And it's gonna, you know, they're gonna look at it and they're gonna know whether, whether their taxes will go up or down. Secondly, they have to understand what their market value is. Some people are right on top of it, and they know exactly. Some people are getting appraisals done now, so that they're ready. So then when we send them their number, they've got something to compare it to. Some people have no clue. They have no clue what their two thousand dollar assessment means, and if we tell them their house is worth forty thousand, they still might not have a clue. They're gonna have to become informed about that.
Well, I guess we'll have to look at the shift analysis and-
The shift analysis will be available. You can ask any kind of question you want to. We can analyze it up and down and backwards.
And, and you had that done?
I don't necessarily think, think it's the right thing for, until this is actually public information, for somebody to sit down and personalize, um, tax changes.
Well, I know for years, if you wanted to look at your assessment, you could go in and look at other people's for comparison.
Right, and, and-
And I'm not sure why that is-
Once, once everybody in the city, once that mailing's gone out, that's public information.
So once you mail them, we can now look at it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I have a question. You said that, um-
Yeah. If we don't get murdered in the way?
That you do the evaluation, are you doing it just about the past taxes, like he has said? Did you mention something about houses around the neighborhood and stuff? Say, like, I have a house around my neighborhood south, within the last three or four years. Are you gonna take that into consideration, or are you just going by the tax rule?
That's kind of why we're brought in. I mean, we're totally impartial. We really don't care who you are, or where your house is, or whatever. We just go ahead and take into consideration if it's a, if it's a residential property, or what has sold in the, you know, in your, in your neighborhood, in your immediate neighborhood, you know, what it's sold for, yeah. No, I don't care what the old assessments are. I really don't. Okay, I mean, the, basically, we just wipe the slate clean. We, we reverified all the data, then we come in and look at the sales for the time period that we had, which was ninety four to August ninety six. And we take those sales into consideration, valuing your property. And then, and then once we come, we use our computerized, or computer-generated, what we call field review sheets, and not to lose you in the lingo, but then we go and physically look at the properties and look at the sales and make sure that we can come up with a number that we can justify, uh, for that particular property. And then, once we've done that, now in the meantime, we've also gone back, and we've had an entire year to look back on the numbers that we put on there in the fall of nineteen ninety six, and actually compare them to what properties have been selling for-
See how they held up?
-all through nineteen ninety seven, and seeing what our numbers were on them versus what they actually sold for. Because remember, the old, the old assessment stayed in place last May. And, uh, and, I mean, we're, we're very pleased from our end of it. And I, I know Diane, that's the other thing, is that Diane has been reviewing these numbers for an entire year. You know, so she's very satisfied with the numbers that we have out there. And I got one back here.
Okay, uh, a question. You said that you'll have, when you have reviews, that you'll have ten or fifteen percent. Normally, only people come in and read whatever figure you come up with. I'd like to think that ten or fifteen percent means that there's ten or fifteen percent that got a cut. But is that actual, or is it actually usually that you end up bringing more money in when you're doing what you're doing, uh, than the way we've been doing it as a percentage?
No, that may, that's, that means there's ten or fifteen percent of the people out there generally figure that our value is too high, and they want an explanation of it. So we take it, and we, so we reconsider the value that we put on there.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, does that mean that there's ten or fifteen percent saying, boy, you just lowered our value? Do you understand what I'm saying? In other words, if there's ten or fifteen percent that you raised, there also must be ten or fifteen percent that you've lowered. Am I right?
No, you, you are like six percent value. Everybody went up to, to full value.
Okay.
That's, that's not what he said.
I mean, that means the bottom line, right?
Yeah, the bottom line is, everybody's gonna pay it more.
No, 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 no.
That's the question, I, that's the question.
If, if you got one of these sheets you handed out-
Yeah, I've got.
If you look at these, the top of them shows that people with the same, uh, assessments, of same value, one person was paying a thousand twenty-nine under the old tax rate. The bottom line was paying twenty-four hundred for the same value property. So when you go to this reevaluation, some go up, some go down. If you've been under, uh, assessed for a number of years, of course, it's gonna go up.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, Mike. But what I'm saying is, I understand the sheet, but this, is this the way, isn't the city of Fulton, is this the tax?
What, was this, was this-
Is this the city of Fulton?
Did this come from the city?
Yeah, so is it actual, now throw it out the road.
This is the reason we're, this is being looked at, because the taxes within the city are not equal or equal value property.
Is it just a coincidence that on the sheet, that for every one person whose tax went down, there were two? It's never, it's, I can tell you right now, somebody, everybody, everybody likes to kick out the rule of thumb that it's one-third up, one-third down, one-third stayed the same. That almost never occurs in, in that exact proportion.
My question is, is it just a coincidence that for every one that went down in tax, there were two that went up? There were thirteen that went up and seven that went down. That's pretty close to two to one.
That's, I mean, this is just, I just-
Will that be the general rule of thumb?
I just picked a random, uh, fifty thousand dollar homes as I went down through the roll in order to, one, go citywide, and, two, show you the difference, the differences in taxes that are being paid for homes that are of the same value. Basically, the only thing this is good for is for demonstrating the inequities that you have in the roll.
So the bottom line is, the city's not gonna raise any more money.
No, you don't.
We're not raising any more money. It's just shifting.
No, we're equalizing the tax burden.
You said that you've done this for other towns, and I've got a few questions. First of all, in the other towns you've done, has there been an average period of time since their last revaluation? There's a lot of houses in town here that haven't been looked at in twenty years, that haven't been reassessed in twenty years. Is there an average period of time in the other towns that you've done? Is it longer than that?
It's, uh, El Myra, when we did El Myra, they, they implemented their last numbers in nineteen sixty. When we did Swiggo, nobody remembered.
I guess that brings me to my next question, and that is, you're gonna guess ten or fifteen percent of the people, when they get this notice, are gonna come in and want an informal hearing. But you've said that there's gonna be no value change in the informal hearing, so are you gonna?
I, I might, no. I don't make a change while they're at that moment. But we consider everything that they told us at the informal hearing to determine whether or not there was a value change to be made.
Okay. Is tax grievance day gonna be more than one day this year? I guess it's gonna be like tax grievance week, because I think there're gonna be a lot of people that wanna grieve their taxes.
There are-
Is it gonna be a little, be pretty user-friendly this time? People won't be turned away for not having forms- People won't be turned away for not having forms filled out? Can we have people there to help them fill out forms and we can do all that?
It'll be more than one day.
My last question is, I, this is kind of ambiguous in getting into, I guess, telling you how to do your job, but I'll use my house as an example because I just bought it 18 months ago and I'd be willing to bet it's worth about $64,000 when you look at your card, because that's what I paid for it. If I can find a house over in Bob's neighborhood that's bigger than mine, nicer than mine, with a lot more yard than my postage stamp, and it's sold for 30, does that mean that mine's worth 15? Do you know what I mean?
If you.
I mean, are you going to consider that? If I can find a piece of property that was assessed at $100,000 that recently sold for 30, how can you say that, I guess, the number you put on my house, are you willing to pay that?
If you want to bring me three properties that you consider comparable and.
I'm not even saying, I'm saying better.
No, no, I'm telling you what you have to do here. I mean, if you want to come into an informal hearing and discuss your value with me and you want to, and I can, this will be all part of what comes out in the public meetings and notices are sent to property owners and like that. If you want to come in and challenge your assessment, then you want to bring me three properties, or at least three, that you consider comparable to yours. And obviously, you're going to bring me three that are lower than yours or something like that, that are in better shape than yours, to indicate to me that yours should be lower than that.
And what's your argument to that?
And my argument's going to be is that I'll review those properties and see, and I'll make my determination as to how comparable I think they are to your property. And then from there, I'll decide whether or not the number needs to be lowered. Now, if you disagree with what I changed the number to, then you have the opportunity to go to grievance day. And if you disagree with what the grievance board says the number is, then you have, then as a single-family residential owner, you have the opportunity to go to small claims. So you have, there's three appeals in this process if you disagree with the number.
So, so bottom line is, I can show you a picture of my little bitty ranch, real small, Diane, on the corner of Sixth and Academy that isn't worth very much.
Little teeny.
And you can put, you could put a number, 64,000, no yard, no. And you put a number on that of 64 because that's what I paid a year and a half. And if I can find in a nice neighborhood like Bob's, you know, three houses that are five bedrooms, two and a half baths and a three-car garage on a half an acre lot that sold for $40,000, and I could say, look, this gorgeous house next to Bob sold for $40,000, so I know mine's got to be less than 40. And you, you're going to come back and say, too bad.
I would find that we enjoy a job very well.
Yeah, I'll take, I'll take whatever you want to give me into consideration. Let me tell you one of the.
Charlie, you should trade up.
Let me tell you one of the standard things that happens, okay, is that the person was either an interior refusal or a total refusal. Okay, they don't want to let us in their property, they don't want to cooperate with the process at all. And they want to come into an informal hearing and they want to tell us how bad their property is and that it ought to be lowered. Now, when that happens, we offer them the opportunity to let us in their home one more time, just like we have to do under contract, to allow us to make that determination as to how bad a shape their property is in. If they still want to, you know, not let us in and say that, and tell us how bad their property is, then basically, our position is, is no change. It's not fair to the people who did let us in and cooperated with the process so we could make a good judgment of what their house was worth, to let somebody who didn't want to let us in and not cooperate with the process to come in and get their value lowered.
Did.
Mike, when you go in, what, some of the people that didn't allow you in, I think the reason was based on the misconception, I believe it's a misconception, of furnishings. Do you take into account furnishings when you go into a house or is it the basic structure?
Basic structure, it's never furnishing.
Well, this was some of the things that I had heard back when this was being done is, no, I'm not going to let them in the house because I don't want to, they'll raise it because of what I've got in the house. And I didn't think that was correct at that time.
Did, did we, did we stick it to the people that didn't let you in?
No, I don't. No, that's not.
I don't know if I'm reading this wrong.
No, that's not, I mean, basically, our philosophy in that is, that's a waste of my time.
Right.
Okay, my idea is to come in with an accurate value.
But you have to make some assumptions.
Right, so I have to make some assumptions, so I make some reasonable assumptions. And if I can make reasonable assumptions and come in with an accurate value, then basically, we've done our job.
Okay, well, on that note, with reasonable assumptions, I asked Diane about three weeks ago for a history of equalization rate over the last, say, 20 years. And our equalization rate has gone down every year for the last 20 years. Bob, how long you lived there? I'll use you as an example.
28 years.
Has the value of your house gone up every year for the last 28 years?
It's leveled off lately, last five years probably.
But that's really what the equalization rate is saying. Now, it's also saying that my house is worth more than it was last year when I bought it. I don't buy that, but I think.
Are you asking me to defend how the state arrives at equalization rates?
The state, I would have to believe, does what they feel is a fair guess, for lack of a better word, of what the properties are worth in the city of Fulton. If you're going to do the same thing, I guess.
No, 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 don't compare me to equalization rates. I mean, you can have your beliefs, but don't compare me to equalization rates.
I'm comparing you to values. If the state gets an equalization rate based on value, don't they? Right?
I don't, you know, I mean, if you want to spend the rest of the night discussing equalization rates, I think we ought to let the rest of the people go because, I mean, it is, it is dry as a bone.
Okay, well, then let's.
And I really, I mean, how.
Then let's get away from that and say. Yeah, I mean, there's 500 or 400, 500 and some properties for sale in the city. If you've got a house that's listed for 75 and you assess it at 90, what's it worth? They can't sell for 75.
Well, run that by me one more time.
If you have a house that is listed for sale for $75,000.
Yeah.
And through your data collection, you think the house is worth 90. And obviously, it's not selling for 75 because it's been for sale for a while. What's that house worth? You're going to say 90, right?
No, I can tell you that.
I'm saying if your card's.
No, I can tell you that our data collection is better than that.
If you're not aware of a house that's on the market and we send them a value at 90,000 and they have it on the market for 75, they would schedule a hearing, an informal hearing and come in with their listing contract. And we would review, you know, they've got it on the market for how many days, how many months.
Does the bank, do banks use these numbers as far as what they're going to loan on properties to? Do they use that? Or maybe, you know, say somebody's considering starting a small business, are the banks or financial institutions going to use these numbers?
Not in New York, they don't rely on them.
Do their own quizzes.
Okay, yeah. No, if you, I mean, there's tests there. In other words, if you've properly exposed a property to the market, or if anybody could step up and buy it that, you know, they wanted to, then you've got to, I mean, there was one, we just did one today, okay, where the, where the bank, it was owned by Freddie Mac, okay, and they let it go for something like 29,000. I mean, it was absurdly low, okay?
Oh, is that market value?
Not if you read the con, not if you read what appears to transpire. I mean, first of all, you've got a lending institution that is an unwilling owner. They want to unload the property as quickly as possible. You know, you don't want to hang your values on that number. Likewise, you can turn around and have a property that's not properly exposed to the market that may have sold too high, and that's not one you want to put your numbers on either. There, there's, you know, you have to have what we call an arm's length transaction in order for the sale to be used. In other words, it was properly exposed to the market, it was adequate time for someone to come in and buy it that wanted to, it was financing available for someone to purchase that kind of property, and both the buyer and the seller are informed of the market. Those are the kinds of sales that you want to use as comparable sales to determine what other properties are worth.
I'm just trying to guess what I think the biggest argument is that you're going to receive. And that is, if you put a value of $70,000 of my house, they'll say, I know I can't sell for 70, and if you think it's worth that, write me a check. I mean, I think people will say that.
Well, believe me, after 30,000 parcels, I don't think there's an argument we haven't heard.
What do you say to somebody like that? It's not, they feel it's not worth 70. List it and prove it.
If you have a listing contract, you know, and you, and it's a legitimate listing contract, you're willing to, you know, it's signed by a broker, and you're exposing it to the market for that amount of money, that's fine, I can take that into consideration.
How far does your contractual obligation go with the city as far as stacking up figures in small claims assessment hearing?
What it is, is that we are here for small, yeah, for small claims, and then tax statutory is done on a case-by-case basis.
But you'll help?
Oh, yes, yeah. That's standard, always do.
Ask one more. Sure, this'll be my last one, I promise. Diane was saying that Town of Volney went through a revale, but didn't implement every number they were given? Isn't that illegal? I mean, don't you have to do all or none?
I really don't want to discuss the Town of Volney.
Well, if that's an issue here, you know, I mean, we would not be able to do the same thing.
No, you will not be able to do the same thing. I will say that. Not while I'm your contractor.
So I didn't hear that wrong then, is what you're saying?
Diane. You can discuss that with Diane. I won't touch Volney with a 10-foot pole.
Diane, have we ever done a revale, the city? No. So obviously, with that many years, there's going to be a number of inequities, and I know that the mayor has spoke of equity. And there's no question, as we look down through this list of figures, there are some people in the city that are, have been undertaxed and some people in the city that have been overtaxed. And I think it's only fair that we look at that, and this is the object of the revale. We have spent $240,000 so far. We spent monies in '91 and '96. So I think even though we want to look at all the different properties or we'd like to see what effect it will have, I think inevitably, we're going to have to make the hard decision to go ahead with it.
By grievance.
There's going to be, there's going, there's no question, there's going to be, there's going to be people that are going to be very concerned that their assessments went up. But just think of the people that are, that have been paying more than their fair share for a long time.
You have been in your house for 28 years. I have been in mine for 25 years. Guess where we're going to be? I know.
You want to change your mind, Ben?
No, no, well, that's, I, that's.
I know, I know this, I know this upfront.
You have to face that.
But we've got to do something. We've got to do something to equalize this. This is unfair.
Yeah, because it's going to, it's just going to continue and it's going to get, it's going to get worse. And you've heard Mike say that we're going to just have to do it all over again if we, if we wait, so.
Well, there's a lot of reasons that I would want to look at both sides. I mean, when we talk about industrial and commercial property, I know, we do everything we can to keep business here because we need jobs and we need stability in the community. But I was here when we had to build a new sewage treatment plant for the industries. And everybody's still paying for it and everybody's hollering about it. It's a hardship for them. And when you look at everything, I mean, every time we do something like that, somebody has to pay, you know, homeowners have been paying, even if some pay more than they should and less than they should. You understand what I'm saying? So if there's a, if there's another shift, I think we'll at least look at it.
No, I think, I agree, we should look at, and we're going to look at that shift. But I think Diane said that.
I want to look at it before we implement this under roll.
Right, and over the years, that industry has gotten to the point where they've reached a level playing field, I guess, with the assessments, so.
Well, on the assessment, yeah.
We lost a lot of.
I mean, you have to look at the whole picture. You have to look at the services that everybody pays for to keep everybody here, you know, the streets, the police, the fire, insurance rating, everything that we do, you know, that's, the homeowners are paying for that too.
Yeah.
That, will we take into account if we look at the homestead?
That's what I'm saying. But I want to look at it before we implement this because it's no good looking at it afterwards. That's all I'm saying. And thank you, you've been very helpful.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Diane.
Thank you very much. Very informative. Need a motion to move to executive session.
Your honor, could I ask one thing?
Yes.
John, seems how this is your first night here, but you see Buck in the morning asking him to move the snow off the corner on the southwest corner of Seventh and the Ninth Street. We generally do that every year, but every time we change administrations, we don't know if we ought to continue it. We've changed administrations and as Don said, it hasn't been moved yet.
We will take care of it.
Thank you very much.
We need to go into executive session on a management contract issue and contract obligation issue. Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Read the next item, please. Resolved that city chamber will be authorized to transfer $1,825 to the ticket account to law account for unused vacation and personal time.
Motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Period. Next paper.
Resolved pursuant to 207(c) of general municipal law, services rendered in the amount of $5,600 be paid to Michelle Diapp, 148 Second Street, Oswego, New York. Said services for a former police officer to the city Fulton Police Department. If further resolved, the chamber will pay said cost from the 1997 unallocated insurance account, A1910.49.
No, sir.
No, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, period. Opposed to adjourn?
Move it.
Move it.
Special.
Don't wait like that. May it.
All views are we out here?
Yes. Oh, there's not a.
Speak up.
The joke full of power.
The power off, Joe?
Yeah.
We're out? Yes, we are.
I have a couple of concerns dealing with the second ward I could bring forward. Mayor, I'd like to find out what the action is on 410 door mirrors. I understand there's somebody was telling me that there are broken windows there. They see Dan going into the doorways or maybe they're claiming that somebody's probably getting in there.
I think that would. I talked to a code enforcement, they have a contractor that is getting estimates of hazardous materials removal. That's why they've been in there. Once they get the hazardous materials out of there, the building will be raised.
Another concern is the data on the Camden Act building on West Second Street.
PDC has been in that building to take samples of the materials were found in there to determine if they are hazardous materials and how they will be disposed of. We are waiting for a report from PDC on that.
Another concern, I've got five concerns that we're down here, is there is a lot, a parking lot on Broadway, West First, West Second, and behind businesses are in and around the corner there. Complaints of the snow is not being removed there. It's icy back there, somebody could fall and you're. The other thing is, is there a fire ring there because trucks are parking and blocking people from getting in and out of there, delivery trucks?
We're going to have to look into that because I'm not sure if that is a city parking lot or if that's private property.
The special assessment district.
I thought it was a special assessment district.
We took over the responsibility of flopping it. I'm pretty sure, it was like three or four years ago.
four years ago.
At one time, but I don't know if that, if that assessment district has stayed or if that, uh, ended.
Some of them got out of it.